Need a... I think I'll get it.
So, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent meditation.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the June 15th meeting of the Lincoln City Council. In accordance with LB 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, and whether they are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After the public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Call the first item.
First would be our public hearing agenda, items 1, 2, and 6.
Anyone wishing to speak on these items? Seeing none, next item.
All right, we can vote on these items. Items 5 and 6 were introduced by Gayler Baird, so moved.
Second. Motion made, seconded by Larian. Discussion. Call the roll.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Fellers?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next would be our public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. First, I'll call the item 7, manager application of Travis Aylers for GMRI Inc., doing business as Olive Garden Restaurant, number 1432, at 6100 O Street, Suite 900. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Travis Aylers, and my address is 9220 Colby Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68505.
All right.
And I'm requesting to put my name on the liquor license.
Any questions for Travis? Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? All right, next item.
All right, next would be item 8, manager application of Lisa Freida for Nebraska Entertainment Inc., doing business as Lincoln Grand Cinema at 1101 P Street. Hi, Lisa. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
My name's Lisa Freida. I live at 18101 North First Street, Davie, Nebraska, 68336. And I'm requesting to be put on the Lincoln Grand's manager liquor license.
Great. Any questions for Lisa? Carl.
Thank you. Welcome. So, you're the new manager? Or?
I've been at the Grand since it's opened.
Okay.
And I was with Douglas Theaters as well before.
Okay, all right. So, I don't know, approximately a year ago, maybe more, year and a half ago, when we approved the liquor license for the Grand. You're there, tell us about the experience.
It's been a wonderful experience for our guests. It's just really an added amenity for individuals coming in.
Okay, all right. We're...I guess the two areas of liquor concerns that we most frequently encounter are individuals who are underage that are served, and also individuals who have been served and are over-served. So, any experience or examples of those kinds of issues, or what do you do to try to make certain that those things don't happen?
We only allow one drink per ID, per individual, at a time. I've had previous experience, just in general, with guests throughout all my career, with Douglas Theaters and Marcus, just dealing with individuals that come into our facilities, even though we don't serve alcohol, where we've had to utilize the Lincoln Police Department if they've been over-intoxicated before entering our building. But as of this point in time, we've not had any issues that we've really had to deal with, other than our normal business from the years.
Thank you.
Well...
Any other questions for Lisa? All right, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak on this item? Okay, next item.
All right, next would be item 9, the application of SMG Food and Beverage LLC for special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 460 feet by 453 feet, labeled Patron Parking on Map 1; outdoor area measuring approximately 965 feet by 1,137 feet, labeled Show Cars Number 1 on Map 1; outdoor area measuring approximately 652 feet by 406 feet, labeled Show Cars Number 2 on Map 1; and an outdoor area measuring approximately 2,082 feet by 18 feet, labeled Pedestrian Bridge on Map 1 at Pinnacle Bank Arena at 400 Pinnacle Arena Drive, on June 27, 2015, from 7:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. I did receive a phone call from Tom Lorenz at 2:36 p.m. He had a family emergency, they are in the emergency room. So, he is not able to make the hearing. If you feel the need to continue it, he'd be happy to attend next week.
Okay. Would...anyone wishing to speak on this item, come forward? Okay, John, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of items 7 and 8 and delay for one week of item 9.
All right. Seconded by Roy. Discussion.
Is there...and so there's no impacted delay for the June 27 event? Okay.
We'll be fine with that.
Okay.
Great. All right. Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Fellers?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Then I will let Tom know it will be next week instead. All right, next would be our public hearing resolutions. Item 10 is accepting the report of new impending claims against the city and approving disposition of claims set forth for the period of May 16 through the 31st, 2015.
All right. Anyone wishing to speak to a claim this afternoon? Okay, next item.
Next would be item 11, approving a resolution regarding the publication of the revenues and expenditures associated with the city of Lincoln's temporary 1/4% sales tax increase instituted on October 1st, 2015, directing the city's finance director to publish on the city's website a monthly and running total of the revenue received from the city's sales tax increase, and directing the finance director to publish on the city's website an itemized list of the monthly and running total of expenditures spent for the public safety radio system, as well as the joint police and fire and rescue station, and the three fire and rescue stations.
All right.
Jeffere Patrick, city attorney. As you might recall, when this was voted to raise the city's sales tax, there was some discussion during the council meeting about how to make it more transparent for the public. Councilman Fellers asked me to draft this resolution. The intent of this resolution is to have a website on the city, or a place on the city's website where the public will be able to track the sales tax receipts that are attributable to this half-cent temporary increase, as well as all the expenditures, and the expenditures will be broken down, so the expenditures for the radio system will not be lumped in with the fire stations. Those will be separated out, so the people can follow, and they'll be both a running total, so you can see the total amount spent on the projects, and a monthly total as well with the expenditures.
Great. Any questions for Jeff on this item? All right, thanks, Jeff. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, next item.
All right, next I'll call items 12 and 13 together. Item 12 is a resolution regarding the response by the city's Public Works Department to the sanitary sewer backup problem suffered by some Lincoln residents during two recent extraordinary rain events, directing the city's Public Works Department to take a number of steps to decrease the likelihood of sewage backups during future large rain events. And item 13 is a resolution to approve the creation of a temporary sanitary sewer disaster recovery assistance program funded by risk management to provide a city fund for reimbursement of mitigation costs for Lincoln homeowners, renters, and small business owners that were impacted by damages caused by sanitary sewer backup during two extraordinary rain events.
Council members, my name's Donna Garden, I'm with Public Works and Utilities, and I want to talk a little bit about the first resolution that's before you. It provides a series of activities that the wastewater division of Public Works and Utilities will perform responding to those sanitary sewer backups that occurred on two storm events, one on October 1st and one on May 7th. Both of these storms were extraordinary events and caused inflow and infiltration into the sanitary sewer, resulting in sewer backups into residences. To date, we've had 31 claims from the October 1st event, and we have been contacted and have confirmed 174 from the May 7th event. And I do have a diagram here of inflow and infiltration, if you'll allow me to show this. Hard to read, but there's a number of ways that water can get into our sanitary sewer system, and this depicts a number of those ways. One of them is from flooded basements, where water goes directly into the sanitary sewer. It's also from manholes in the system, if we have faulty manholes, or if we have situations where flooding can pour into manholes, where like covers are undone. Sump pump and foundation drains are also a concern to us, and we certainly urge any of the residents in Lincoln to confirm that their sump pumps are discharging to the outside and not into the sanitary sewer. Broken or cracked service lines could be possible, these are lines that the homeowner owns, and also cracks and root infiltration to city-owned mains could also be a concern. But you can see a number of different things on this diagram that show where inflow and infiltration come from. Sanitary sewers that are not combined with storm sewers are designed with an industry level of inflow and infiltration. Lincoln's system was designed to handle the inflows from a 10-year rain event and exceeds the standards in the industry. In addition, the wastewater division has a rigorous inflow and infiltration reduction program. It's been in effect since the last major event of this nature, which was 1984. It includes televising with in-pipe video, approximately 100 miles of sewer pipe every year. And we use that to determine the condition rating of the pipes and the sections, and to ensure that the correct installation of newly constructed line. Those condition ratings will then be used for projects to repair them in the future. Pipeline maintenance jetting of approximately 550 miles of wastewater collection pipes yearly cleans and removes the buildup of grease and grit and other debris. We do root control in approximately 70 miles of wastewater collection pipes yearly to remove and chemically treat tree root intrusion, and we had continuous monitoring of flow indications in the system to detect high levels and provide model input. This resolution adds a number of additional activities that we will undertake to further evaluate our system in an attempt to decrease the likelihood of rain-induced backups. We'll continue our use of our video that we take to inspect the lines for defects that could affect the amount of inflow and infiltration into the sewer system. The areas most affected by these two storms have already been completed, and a report is forthcoming. We're going to fully inspect the siphons that allow gravity sewer to flow under obstructions such as creeks, and evaluate if they function as designed when the lines are surcharged, or full of water, in this case, storm water. Special emphasis will be placed on Dead Man's Run crossings that directly impact the areas most affected. We utilize our monitoring system and the information gathered during the storms to see if high flows were caused by inflow or infiltration. This can better help us to understand if this is a flood-related issue, groundwater infiltration, or illicit connections like sump pumps going into our system. A small portion of Dead Man's Run can be diverted either to our northeast wastewater plant or to Teresa Street. This is currently routed to Teresa Street for economic reasons, and an evaluation after the October storm determined that switching that flow during a rain event would not have made a difference to those backups. We will continue that evaluation to determine if routing this area or repiping it may make in any way have a permanent basis that would relieve some of the pressures on the trunk lines going to Teresa Street. Along with that, we will be evaluating if piping changes in the most affected areas could relieve restrictions and possibly prevent backups using our model, and whether inflows from some other source may be affecting the collection system. From all of these evaluations, we will revisit our inflow and infiltration reduction program, and to include any of the recommendations or modifications that can improve the overall effectiveness of that program. At our Teresa Street wastewater plant, we will look at other practical, economical, and environmentally sound ways to handle excess flows. These could include evaluations of our pumping capacity, additional treatment, and possible storage. We already have a scope of work established for this evaluation by an independent engineering firm. While many of these actions we will complete in the near future, an overall report will be submitted to the mayor and to you no later than May 1st of 2016. Updates will be available upon request, and if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to address them.
Cindy.
Thank you. Ms. Garden, as far as the sump pumps that you mentioned, there's just a couple of things I'm attentive on. One of them is that it's my experience in talking with folks is they really don't know if their sump pump was hooked up correctly or not, and so the idea would be if someone has a sump pump that's not correctly hooked up, that they would become aware of that and then take whatever steps are necessary to correct it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, as part of your evaluation, is it possible for the department to determine, just kind of evaluate what types of programs or proactive programs may be available, and make recommendations to us so that the homeowners that don't know, let's give them some incentive to go find out?
We are working on a number of citizens releases and some information available for people to kind of have a checklist to see what they could go through, and we will be taking a look at a number of things to help people understand how that system works in their own homes.
Thank you.
Jane.
Well, on the same question, does a homeowner need a permit to install a sump pump in their home if they do it themselves?
Sump pumps should be put in by a plumber, and they would need to go by the city code, the plumbing code here. Oftentimes, though, that's not the case. Pumps are easy to come by at any of your hardware stores, and normally houses are built with a sump but don't have no pump installed, so it's oftentimes where the homeowner will just go out to the hardware store and pick one up and install it themselves.
So, these are older homes primarily that might have this problem, that they are...
Actually, I think they're more on the newer side, where sumps are normally put into houses now as regular course. I think in the older homes oftentimes, at least my older home, didn't even have a sump in the basement, so...
So, for a homeowner, they're supposed to have the water pumped outside, but not necessarily... Where are you supposing that most people have been diverting the water inappropriately?
Oftentimes, it's easier just to put it in your drain in your basement. I mean, that's just the easiest access point. Where the water is supposed to go is it's supposed to exit outside, it can go to the storm drain, that is allowable, but normally we just need it to be outside and into the stormwater system and not the sanitary sewer system.
And by that...oh, I'm sorry.
John, then.
Yeah, could you put your drawing on or your illustration there again, please? Thank you. What I'd like to address is from, I think, as we talk about sanitary lines, and you show that big trunk line that's under the street there, and then you've got that sort of pale green one that goes from that line to the house, which, if I'm identifying that correctly, because it is small print, that would be the homeowner's line. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And just so we establish this, that is something that we as homeowners, property owners, are responsible for maintaining.
That is correct.
And so, if you could address the ways infiltration occurs there, for example, the sump pump could be dumped into your home drain, which would then go through that all the way to the street. You show tree roots there. You've also got what's called the tap line, where it actually taps into the main city line, and you could also have just deterioration over time. And again, those are elements that we as homeowners need to be aware of as our responsibility. You mentioned we scope lines. Now, when you say scoping, do we scope the individual lines, or are we just talking about the city lines?
No, we just do our city lines with our video program. A homeowner can certainly have that done with the...by a plumber to go and have their own lines videoed.
And what do we do when we find a home line, for example, that the tap has fallen off?
We usually notify the homeowner. We bound, in terms of that, if it's on the homeowner's line, if it's something that it's a city responsibility, then we do that repair.
Do you know if those get done?
I do not have any information on that right now.
Okay, thank you.
Larian, then Carl.
Well, just to follow up on what you said about sump pumps, if, even if people don't have a sump pump system, from what you've said, it sounds like it makes sense for everyone's benefit that if they are bailing water out of their basements and it's come from a recent storm, that you encourage citizens to then take that water outside and not put it in a floor drain, not put it in a basement shower drain, because that in effect will send more water into the sanitary sewer system as well.
That's true, but we also recognize the difficulty in asking people to do that. It's much easier to sweep that water towards the sanitary sewer, but yes, that is true.
But that is a potential contributor to the problem as well.
It is a potential contributor to it.
Okay, thank you.
Carl.
Okay, I'm gonna ask to see the sketch again, okay. So, for those who have had, or maybe those are just worried about having these kinds of issues in their homes, one of the possible remedies or preventions, I guess, that you could take would be for a backflow preventer, right? And so, on your sketch, where would that be located?
I can point to an area here. It would be right here, it would be before your first branches come off of your system.
So, before your branch that goes to your drain in your basement, it would have to be before all of that, that's where the backflow preventer would exist.
Okay, thank you.
Could you not put it in your basement too? In some cases, depending where it's positioned?
You can, as long as it's before any of the branches to your system.
Do you want to explain exactly what that does, just in case people don't quite understand what a backflow preventer is?
A backflow preventer is basically a one-way flap. It will open when you have material coming from your house and going out to the sanitary sewer, and it will close itself if something should back up against it, so it will prevent any kind of flow coming back up from the main of the sewer.
What happens if I flush the toilet?
When it's closed?
Yes.
I don't know.
I do. I know. If it's closed and you flush the toilet, it backs up into your basement. That's what happens. Your own sewage backs up. So, you can't use your own, you can't use your own plumbing to dispose of anything when the backflow preventer is closed.
If you temporarily secure it, I believe, on a normal operation, like Ms. Garden was saying, it's a one-way flow.
It'll go out normally, but if you're having a flood event and it's shut, anything you flush or send down your drain will back up into your basement.
But that would be less than what would come up.
Oh, we would hope. We would hope.
Okay. Jane.
I have a question about the design of our system. Do most municipalities our size have their systems designed for a 10-year rain event? Is that standard and customary, or are we exceeding a design?
Actually, we exceed the normal industry design in this. Ours are actually bigger and more able to handle rain events than other cities in the Midwest and the nation.
Can you talk about the extraordinary amount of rainfall?
We had, obviously, these two events were not only extraordinary in the amount of rainfall, but in terms of the duration and the intensity that they actually occurred in. In particular, the one in May was almost universally across Lincoln, so we had input coming in from, every one of our meters in our collection system was showing, they were off the chart. I mean, it was, we had lots of flow coming in everywhere. Whether that was from flooding events or infiltration, it's unknown at this time. But they were unprecedented, we've only had two other events that I know of in the history of Lincoln. One was in 1984, which was a fairly severe event, which caused our initiation of the program that we have, our inflow and infiltration reduction program. And one was in, I believe, 93, 93 or 94, and that only affected a small area. But that was the one that we based most of our modeling on, even though it only really did most of its damage around Beale Slough. So, those are, and they're pretty far apart, and we haven't seen this kind of thing where we've had two events that occurred within seven months, like this.
Any other questions for Donna? All right, thank you, Donna. All right, anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Hi, good afternoon. Greg Hacker, H-A-C-K-E-R. I spoke actually at the last meeting we had, John.
For that, yes.
Cindy, I'm a landlord in your district, and we had several buildings impacted by this, so I understand there's a possible vote coming up. So, I have a couple of specific questions, obviously, there's a lot fewer people here this time to talk about it. One, presuming I'm the eternal optimist, right, if you were to find it in your heart, to find some way to try to help us satisfy this, what is your timing? Right? I don't expect an answer, these are somewhat rhetorical, obviously, when you go to vote. When you finally reach a vote, if you have a very specific list, I mean, the county attorney might tell you specifics better than general, I'm not sure, in this case, if you can tell us what precisely you would like included and not included. Something that's very concerning to us, obviously, is the amount of lost land we have in these buildings. They're uninhabitable. They're clean, but they're uninhabitable. Without some sort of assistance, obviously, we can't rebuild these and make them inhabitable again. The concern that we have until we reach some final verdict with you is that we really are kind of frozen in place, and what I spoke of last time, what I spoke of last time is, you know, we needed kind of an answer in short order, and Public Works has been out there and they've done something. I don't know how much rain we've gotten since the May 6, May 7 event. I can tell you whatever they've done since then to today, we've had no water anywhere. All the people that were affected at that time, there has been no water. So, whatever it is they did at that time, it may be a very short-term fix, but it has at least solved it in the short term. As far as the plumbing issue, John, you asked about the backflow preventers, and as Roy told you, you know, in a commercial application, it's a lot more difficult to have a backflow preventer placed, because you have too many people involved that would not know that there's a flawed action. Very similar to the example that she gave you about the sump pumps being connected to the system, the more people that were to install backflow preventers without whatever the proximate cause was being replaced, being fixed, you're just gonna push that problem up the line. And certainly, we had talked about that with regard to the permit issue, perhaps that's your, and you won't hear this very often, right, but perhaps that's something you might want to add to the code, is it isn't a mandatory item to have it in the new home construction. Because if you do that, that's certainly from a risk standpoint to the city, don't want to give you advice, but from a risk standpoint to the city, obviously, that lowers the chance that, you know, it got into that homeowner, so that person isn't gonna have a claim any longer. So, it might be something that you consider. Right? I have no other comments, but if you had questions, I'd be glad to take them.
Questions for Mr. Hacker, and then as far as, you know, answering your questions, I think that we'll have the city attorney come up and kind of go through the attachment item that was to the item to address those questions specifically, because it is contemplated in what we're trying to do here.
Fair enough.
And the other thing I would like to address is that your son is maybe the most well-behaved kid I've ever seen in my life.
I didn't want to throw you off your game, but I brought my lawyer. See the top of his head. Don't let his stasher fool ya. Fireball, so don't...
How old is he?
Thank you. Reese, how old are you? You're on camera, you get a chance.
He's seven. He's seven.
Probably a pretty good lawyer.
Good lesson in civics.
John, go ahead.
You talked about, I believe you have several duplexes or what have you.
Right.
And so, the lower levels are uninhabitable. Do you have, I'm just asking a myriad of questions here, do you have any backflow preventers currently?
No. Much similar to everyone else, right? You think this is a one-time event, right? And so, we have postulated now what our solution to this problem is. And so we have posulated now what our solution to this problem is. May not be a, it may not be a solution, but it is with everything, it takes money, obviously, to do that. And at the end of the day, ultimately, if there's no way to really rebuild economically up there, it, it's not gonna matter to me, you know, what it costs to, to do that.
Okay. And out of your units, do you have any approximation of what you might be looking at?
Well, you know, the bid, if you wanted me to give you the retail bid, you know, I spoke about it last time, I would estimate that the retail bid to repair, okay, which would cover soup to nuts as far as the remediation of the water, the cleaning out on the disposal, and then putting them back to as-buzz condition, I would guess about $160,000 or $180,000.
And that's for how many units?
That's for four units. We have a fifth.
Sorry, how many?
That's for four.
Four.
Right? The, the bid so far is $16,000 per kitchen. And that's before we, that's four kitchens, so you start doing the math, that's before we replace any of the appliances. I threw out $40,000 worth of appliances in one day. So while, you know, we're talking about an amount of money that is not insignificant, obviously, it doesn't approach what my damages are. And so the timing factor becomes extremely important to me, John, because, you know, we're gonna have to make a final decision of what we can do up there, right?
We're gonna have to have someone come up, it might even be better now rather than later, talk about what is covered, because it's called remediation.
Correct.
And remediation has a specific definition, which I don't think would include your appliances.
Which, which my definition would be a lot longer, I'm sure.
Well, it might be.
I don't think you find that surprising, my definition would be longer. So I think the specifics of it are extremely important.
I think maybe we should, so that as others testify, they have an understanding. And as you know, the program would have $5,000. Now, and I, I guess we'd have to have some explanation whether that would be per unit or what. I'm not sure how that would be, or, but.
We'll have Jeff address that, but I think Jane has one more question before Mr. Hacker.
I do. Did your insurance cover anything?
This is not a covered event.
This is not a covered event?
No. One of the items that I talked about, there's, there's a bunch of things, John, I actually tried to call you when you're on vacation, sorry, sorry. When I said last time that I thought there were other remedies that you could provide us, you know, one of them that would be fantastic is go ahead and ask the insurance commissioner to come down here and say, why are you writing commercial policies in our state that offer uncovered risk to small business owners? Why are you letting them do that? Just, just ask them to help us out. If that coverage were available, I would have purchased it. That coverage is not available. NFIP, which everyone in the flood zone has to cover, guess the one thing at the very top that it doesn't cover? Anything below grade. They cover submersion and submersion only. And so if there are 14 feet of water sitting at the hole, at the 33rd and Holders intersection, we're all gonna be having a different discussion, right? But submersion, approximately two feet deep in my basement, or in my basement apartments, I should say, that's not covered. That's not covered. So there's very, there's precious little recovery we have, you know, unless we can find some agreement to where you can make it worth my while to want to invest the money up there again. You know, if, if it's not viable for any of us, then it's not viable. You know, I asked you the question specifically about timing, because this is two months now, basically, you know, the operation can't make its mortgage payment, that's where it's at. And so there's only so many months I can obviously do that before I'm, you know, before I can't be here any longer, you can find, then my lawyer will be testifying. You'll need a different camera size, right? It's my, it's my thought. So, you know, that's extremely important. But there, there are other things I think could be accomplished by the city to help us out and encourage us to try to share some of this risk.
And, you know, I just saw Jim David Saver leave, who is our emergency management director. I know when, when he comes back in, I would, I would like to ask him some questions about what FEMA can offer in assistance to your situation.
Yeah, I very, I very much thought we should, you know, we should pre, or excuse me, we should try to have the area declared disaster area, right? Federal funds then become available in certain situations. That's way over my head, okay? So I'm speculating that those funds would be available.
Okay. I had one follow-up I made, Mr. Hacker.
Sure, John.
Last time you were here, you made a statement to the effect that, you know, said, please help us know there's a solution down the road, something like that, otherwise give the keys back to the bank.
Yes, and they were, they weren't as happy with that commentary as you might think.
Yeah. And I, I heard several others testifying, it seemed like there was a heavy emphasis on, let us know this isn't gonna happen again. So my question is, which is more important to you, working, putting the million dollars toward a solution or toward some remedies here for some people now?
That's a good question, and, you know, you know to always anticipate the question. That's one I didn't anticipate, that's a good one.
You learned that law school.
You know, exactly, right. No, that's why, that's why it's a good question. You know, to be honest, I don't know that any of this matters to me, John, is the reality of it. I don't, I don't know that I can stay up there. So for me, it, it may not matter at all. You know, the amount of money that we put into the apartments to repair them in October and then have to literally package all that up and throw it out again in May, you know, I, I'm not sure I can sustain that. And I don't know that we can find, I don't think we can find with Public Works, a place where there's a risk number that I can absorb. You know, I'm, I'm fairly, you know, I have a large risk appetite, right? And I would take a lot of 50-50 bets, and I'm telling you that right now, I'm not sure there's any solution that puts us under that 50-50 at this point. And that's concerning. I mean, we don't know, obviously, none of us know when it's gonna happen again.
Are there, are there any insurance options available to you as a small business owner and operator for your properties?
Yes, there's, there's a number of offerings that we have that protect us. This is a very singular and unique event, right? And in a homeowner's situation, if it's your primary residence, the coverage is like five or six dollars a month to add sewer backup. In a commercial application, as I'm using it, that, that coverage, to my knowledge, right, and I think we've, myself and another landlord, we've queried enough insurance companies to be fairly certain in saying that that's not offered in this state. And so the loss that we face here, from a pure dollars and cents, this is now an uncoverable risk. And you really have to make a hard decision about an uncoverable risk in any business. You know, if it was available for $6 a month, you can be sure I would have bought it on November 1st.
Unfortunately.
Questions for Mr. Hacker. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Jeffrey Patrick, city attorney. Wanted to address briefly Resolution 15R 119, which is the resolution before you, speaking in terms of the Disaster Recovery Assistance Program, which is rather unique, I think, in Lincoln's history. Let me start with the question of the claims pending against the city. You recall back in May, I was in front of you, and we were discussing the claims from the October storm event. We had, I believe, 31 claims at that time. It was a recommendation of the law department at that time that the city council deny all of those claims, because based upon our view of the operation of the city stormwater system, or the sewage water system, the decisions that were made by the staff during, all of the factors went into that, that the, the primary cause for the sewer backups was this extraordinary weather event, and that the city was not liable, the city was not negligent in that regard. As you recall, when we had that hearing in May that was following the May 6th, 7th storm, and so it was the decision of the city council on that meeting to neither deny or to accept those claims. And those claims are still out there pending. Since then, as I'm sure you're all aware, we have received a number of claims against the city for the sewage backups that happened in the May 6th and 7th storm. Based upon our analysis to date, my expectation is that the law department will make the same recommendation to the city council for those May claims as we did for the October claims, and that is that the city is not liable, and our recommendation will be that the city council denied those claims as well. And with that as a backdrop, then I would ask you to consider this resolution that talks about setting up a temporary disaster recovery assistance program. And I would compare this to the types of disaster programs that are frequently done on, on a national basis. If you have droughts, if you have hurricanes, if you have flood events, then the federal government will set up temporary disaster programs. On occasion, help out the people in those areas most significantly affected by those weather events. And the, the resolution that you have in front of you today is capped at $1 million. That's the proposal. So if once the $1 million are, is paid out in, to, in disaster recovery relief, then the, the money is spent and there is no more money available. The individual caps would be $5,000 per storm. And so there are a number of people that would, I suspect, bring claims both from the October storm and, and from the May storm, because there were a number of households that were affected by the sewage backups during both events. The plan of the, the program would cover small business owners, it would call, cover homeowners, and it would cover renters. It is based on a unit, so if you have a duplex, it would cover both units individually, $5,000 per. If you have a quadplex, the, the limit would be $5,000 per living unit. That's the design. It is proposed just for remediation. And so the cost of disposing, the, the costs of cleaning up, all of those, the costs for disinfecting the sewage would all be covered, would be reimbursed under this program. What it would not cover would be the replacement costs, the rebuilding costs. So in essence, we would pay to take out the infected, the affected drywall, we would not be paying to replace that drywall, we would be taking, we're paying to remove the carpet, we would not be paying to replace the carpet, we would not be paying the damages of personal property for the carpeting, the furniture, whatever is stored in the lower level that was affected by the sewage. We have talked with Neighborhood Works, a neighborhood nonprofit, about assisting the city with that program. They are, are willing to do that, kind of fits within what they see as their mission to encourage homeownership within inner-city neighborhoods. We've been negotiating with them a contract. It's our expectation that we would have a contract, that they would be prepared to start accepting and processing claims by as early as next week.
Questions for Jeff. Jane.
So could you talk about the, the timeline? So if, if you would be, have a new claim, are you just talking about the, the 31 in October and the 174 in May, those claims on record? If, you're saying that if we vote for this resolution, that, to provide this type of emergency assistance to those homeowners and small business owners and landlords, that they could see some relief by, you said, as early as?
Well, it's gonna be a reimbursement program, so if, if they would contact us next week, we would evaluate the claim. If they came in with, with receipts, for example, if they'd hired our company to clean out their basement, and they said, okay, they've cleaned out the basement, here's what it cost us, I would think that we could make a payment on that, that disaster application relatively quickly.
Because I know that's important to people, so could you further define relatively quickly?
Well, we would, we would have to confirm that it was sewage backup, and I say relatively quickly because, I mean, there's a range here. If someone hasn't contacted the city yet, and, and the program is, goes into effect, we would have to make an inspection to determine whether it was a sewage backup or a stormwater backup. And so that might slow things down. But those 170 people in the May storm, almost all of those, their properties had already been inspected by Public Works. So it's not a matter of determining whether it was a sewage backup or not. We've already made that inspection, we've probably made that determination. And so if someone has already had that done, we know it's sewage backup. If they hired a commercial person to, to do the treatment, I mean, they could come in and bring the receipt with them. Our credit's pretty good with the city. I think that we could have a, a check issued within three or four weeks on the outside, maybe shorter.
Other questions for Jeff?
That's three or four weeks of when?
Three or four weeks from receiving the application for disaster relief.
And that would be processed then by Neighborhood Works?
That would be processed by Neighborhood Works, but the check would come from the city.
Jane.
I don't know if you could answer this, Jeff, or maybe Jim David Saver could answer this, for those landlords or property owners, do they have any recourse working with FEMA funds, or what is that application process available to them?
That would be something I'll, I'll let him answer. I think he's more able to do that.
Larry.
Same questions for Jim and about timeline.
Thank you. In the Resolution 15R 119, we talk about the Disaster Recovery Assistance Program is in part of the attachment.
Yes.
And on the attachment, we do list Neighborhood Works, but we don't yet have a signed agreement with them, right?
No, we've been meeting with them, we've got a draft contract, there are a few details we, we need to work out with them. They've been very cooperative, we feel very comfortable that we can have a signed agreement no later than early next week. I mean, this is a matter of working through the, the last details with them.
Right, and of course, it wouldn't necessarily have been prudent to have them sign that before we pass a resolution.
Well, that's exactly right.
At this, at the same time, since we don't have a signed resolution, I think I might be more comfortable just adding or another nonprofit, so that we're not now held hostage once we sign the resolution. Does that make sense?
Yes, that would not be inappropriate. Certainly, we think they're an appropriate agency, they've indicated their willingness to do so, but if the unforeseen happened and we reached an impasse and we're unable to reach an agreement, we'd certainly then try to go to another nonprofit, rather than Neighborhood Works.
Okay, thank you. If for some reason we didn't identify another nonprofit, would we still be able to act as the city and take care of the program ourselves?
We, we do have that capability. We felt that an organization like Neighborhood Works, because of their experience in working with neighborhoods across Lincoln, would be an appropriate agency to help us out with this program, but.
Right, no, just if in fact.
If in fact we couldn't find a nonprofit agency, I think between the law department and the public works department, we'd be able to proceed with the program.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions for Jeff, what I'll do is have Mr. David Saver come up and answer some questions, and then we'll go to the rest of the testimony, but I know he's got maybe some time constraints, because it really hasn't stopped raining in the city for a very long time, so.
Mr. Patrick, one, one clarification.
Yes.
Any compensation to outside party, would that be, come out of the $1 million then, so reduce that?
The compensation for administrative costs at Neighborhood Works would come out of the $1 million, yes. Yeah, I, as I thought I stated before, it'd be the $5,000 per storm, so $5,000 for the October storm, $5,000 for the May storm, and there were a number of households that were affected by both.
Jim.
Jim David Saver, Director, Lincoln Lancaster County Emergency Management. If you'd like, I guess I can give you a bit of an overview of the process to this point, and then what we anticipate in the near future, and then several steps down the road. When the rain started with the May 6th and 7th event, when we realized that we were dealing with a potential disaster, I filed the necessary paperwork with NEMA, Nebraska Emergency Management Agency. It's a simple one-page report, it's called the Incident Status Report. And essentially what that is, from the local level, me as the city-county official responsible for that, just to let the state know, we're dealing with a potential disaster here. So moving forward from there, we coordinated our efforts with NEMA's Public Assistance Officer, his name is Donnie Christensen. We were dealing with the events not only in Lancaster County, but the state was dealing with the, the disaster, the rainfall, the flooding that we had 10, in 10 counties throughout the southeast part of the state. So we jump ahead to the end of May, FEMA had some of their teams here in Lancaster County in the southeast part of the state to conduct what they call the Preliminary Damage Assessment, the PDA. We, at the county level, had met our threshold for a disaster declaration, because that's just over $1 million, and the damage estimates turned into me, that just cover public property and critical infrastructure, was over $3.9 million. So the other thing about it is, just because you meet those certain thresholds or conditions, it doesn't mean you will automatically be, that, that disaster declaration will automatically be issued. So FEMA, when they conducted that preliminary damage assessment in May, met with the principals on the city side, it was Public Works, Parks and Rec, those were the agencies that identified the most damage, and on the county side, it was the county engineer. So FEMA collected all that initial data, they go back to their regional office in Kansas City and do their evaluation from there. At the state level, in fact, I have a copy of it here, Governor Rickett's office just issued the formal disaster declaration request last Friday. That's part of the process, one of the hoops that has to be jumped through as we go along. So when FEMA completed their onsite assessment here in late May, they estimated it may be late July or early August before we hear whether or not the disaster declaration will be granted. If that disaster declaration is granted, then FEMA comes back to the area, they host a couple of different meetings. One of them is an applicant briefing where they will meet with the principals involved to tell them exactly what assistance is available and what you need to do in order to get that. And in large scope, it's broken down into public assistance and individual assistance. Public assistance focuses again on public property and critical infrastructure. Individual assistance is just that. The individual homeowner, business owner can file the paperwork with NEMA and say, I was directly affected by this disaster. I'm requesting assistance. So that's the process. Just because you ask for a disaster declaration doesn't mean it will be granted. Just because a disaster declaration is issued doesn't mean you qualify for this public or this individual assistance. And one thing, this is my first disaster, so to speak, as the Director of Emergency Management. I've been on the job since last August. But looking at some of the research and the, is it possible to get individual assistance? Yes. Is it probable? Based on the research that I've done, it doesn't look like it. Because what FEMA looks at is the overall impact to the community. So if we're talking about the three hundred thousand residents of Lancaster County, what's the overall impact? So those nearly two hundred homeowners, property owners that were directly affected by the sewage backup on their property, what's the overall impact? So again, I can't say it won't happen, but the information I've been given and in looking at past history, the likelihood of individual assistance being granted under these circumstances, it doesn't look like it's likely.
Questions for Jim?
I do.
Larry?
And I know you've had, you've had conversations with the Public Assistance Officer, Donnie Christensen.
Correct.
Presumably, you've talked about whether or not he thinks it's likely, and it is also his take that it's unlikely?
He was my go-to source, my subject matter expert there, and he's got experience in dealing with these matters. And that was his view, looking at that big-picture view of the overall impact to the community. Obviously, it's a significant impact to those directly affected. The overall community, not so much. So that's where he seemed to think, yes, the likelihood of that individual assistance being offered, he didn't think so, didn't think that was very probable.
Cindy?
In the event that the assistance is available to individuals for larger losses, you had mentioned they would be, apply and find out which aid they qualified for. And could part of that aid, isn't it available maybe through low-interest or zero-interest loans?
Correct. It's my understanding the FEMA assistance is a grant, something that you would not be responsible to repay. But that's another option that's there. If it is a federally declared disaster, the Small Business Administration can offer some low-interest loans, not only to business owners, but to individual homeowners. So you're right, that's another possibility there that, again, at this point, is still on the table, is still available for discussion. But like I said, that only comes into play, any of this assistance or loans only come into play if FEMA declares the disaster.
Thank you.
Jane?
If the city of Lincoln were to vote in favor of this emergency assistance program, and could that small business owner apply for a low-interest loan, do they look unfavorable on the assistance they may have received from the city of Lincoln for this emergency that we are experiencing?
It certainly could. It sounds like it because that's what they are, they want to give the assistance to those who are in greatest need. And if you've already received some assistance from another source, yes, your need for that FEMA assistance may be reduced. The other thing about it too is the practical application, and I've had an opportunity to talk to some of those directly affected, that if it's your primary residence, if that's where you live, obviously, you need to make those repairs, that cleanup, so you can continue to live in your house. So that's why I've been very specific with people, making sure that they understand they're not guaranteed any reimbursement or assistance, but certainly to document everything. Take photos of the before and the after. Keep all your receipts because that's the one thing that FEMA stressed during their preliminary damage assessment. You've got to have that thorough documentation. So on the county-city side, I think our data management system does an excellent job of doing that. We can track all of that. Any of the individuals out there need to make sure that they are keeping good receipts, good paperwork, that if they want to get assistance, you've got to be able to demonstrate what your cost was, what your impact was.
And just as a follow-up on the timeline, to receive any type of FEMA assistance, be it a low-interest loan, could you talk a little bit about the process or what have you seen or what is customary of their timeline?
If the federal disaster declaration is issued, that starts a new thirty-day clock in that within those thirty days, FEMA comes back to the affected area to host those applicant briefings. There are some other things that pertain to the actual event itself, and that's the problem in dealing with a flooding event. Obviously, a disaster's a disaster. A catastrophic event is just that. But you have a tornado come through, it started at eight oh four PM and it ended at eight oh eight, and you can literally go in and start to pick up the pieces. The problem with a flooding event is you may have a start time, but when is that end time? And that's where NEMA has filed a few requests with FEMA to make this current issue conditional. It started May second because actually the rainfall we got started the weekend before. Then it was several days later when we had the rainfall of the sixth and the seventh. But Donnie Christensen, the Public Assistance Officer at the state level, has asked FEMA to recognize May second as the start date and leave it open-ended from there, meaning hopefully, we've seen the worst of it. But again, we're still dealing with the direct effect of this rain event that started well over a month ago.
So if FEMA comes back maybe sometime at the end of July, and they have a forum where they can meet with those applicants that are concerned and would like to see some disaster relief, what's that process? I mean, does that take another month or do they, are they able to assess and evaluate or do they have to send investigators or?
And again, that I don't know. I think it depends on the scope and it depends on how many interesting applicants they may have. When they're dealing with the public assistance, they characterize them as work projects. City Parks and Rec estimates their damage, their repair cost at X amount. So FEMA would literally write work projects. We need to reconstruct a trail system. On the county side, we're looking at county roads and bridges. So again, and that's the problem that you deal with in a stormwater event like this is it's just arbitrary as far as we got a significant rain last month, we got significant rain last night. How do you differentiate the new damage from the old damage other than we know what things looked like May second? We know how badly the damage is when it's run its course, so to speak. So that way, the overall management of the incident, it's my understanding, it's better to do that or you have more discretion in the fact that it's open-ended. We haven't seen the end of it yet.
Larry?
You mentioned that you've been encouraging people to document just in case this process unfolds successfully for us here in Nebraska and in Lincoln in particular. What would you tell the public who you haven't spoken with yet? How can they be more informed about this process and be able to watch it and monitor it and participate in it should we have the opportunity? Where can we access, where can the public access that information and potentially provide the documentation?
Right. My agency, Lincoln Lancaster County Emergency Management, would be the point of contact. Anybody with some information, that's just it. There's some data that I've collected from the public agencies that have been directly affected by it. That's what FEMA considers during their preliminary damage assessment. Those who just want to be informed, I guess just make sure that you're monitoring the news outlets so that as information comes available. The other thing, at the state level, they're very good at issuing press releases. The most recent one just last Friday about the governor requesting the disaster declaration. They have a public information officer with NEMA who does just that. Jody Foul is her name. She gets that information out there in a timely manner to ensure that everyone is well-informed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. All right, anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Come on down.
Hi, my name is Matt Wattier. It's spelled W-A-T-T-I-E-R. I'm here for the Baldwin Street, thirty-five twenty-five Baldwin Apartments. I guess I just wanted to talk about, I just mentioned that I, you know, I have not resubmitted my claims for last October. I know they must not have received them. I just want to put that out there. Our estimates for this time though have been, just to re-clarify how much the expenses were for one building, were forty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. You talked with Greg about that. I've been working pretty much every night till at least midnight, two in the morning, trying to repair these issues we have. I would just like clarification on, is that compensatable? I've been taking off from my job. I do work at a normal job. So I've actually had to take all my leave that I have available to me off. I was wondering if that is possibly compensated for the amount of time that's worth, not just the hourly compensation. The sewer backflow preventers you guys had talked about, there are liabilities. I had talked with insurance companies about that. The first thing they had told me, they, the insurance companies did not feel they were in the business to insure the city. So the second thing they said was that if we did have a backflow preventer in there, anything that enters a sewer line, once it enters there, is uninsurable. There's nothing we can do to get that compensated if there is an issue. I'd like to see some sort of laws changed on that too, that would fix that, that liability that we see. That goes, everything that goes into the wall into the main sewer line, as it was explained to me. The other liability issue is the, the backflow preventers are a maintenance headache, is what I'm being told by plumbers. I've called several plumbers and talked to them about that. In our situation with the amount of tenants there, if we did have a problem that happens, say unrelated to a storm event, that would also be uninsured because of the nature of how it goes into the sewer lines. So that would be an added liability on top of the stormwaters that we'd have to deal with. So I don't feel that that would be a plausible fix to any situation there for us. When I talked to FEMA, they came in and evaluated our property, and the first thing they did was handed me a paper, page eighteen, paragraph one, and stated that we do not cover anything a sixteenth inch below grade except for, and they had a list of things. Basically, the only thing they'll cover on anything, any place, is sheet rock unfinished and a hot water heater and a water softener. And I think there was a couple of other things on the list. That really left me wondering where we go, what we can do to go cover ourselves. I mean, we are a business. We have a need to be in a basement or below grade there where we are located. Not even, yeah. The other issues, the sixteenth inch below grade is something we need to really consider looking at. You know, you asked, you know, do we put a million dollars towards sewer lines or would you put a million dollars towards repairing houses? My, you know, I would say people are very resourceful in this town. You know, myself, I've worked hard to try and fix these up. For a homeowner, they have time to repair this. For us, it's an expense every day, every day that we wait, every day that we do something that doesn't involve fixing the place up. I would maybe ask that you guys put that into consideration into where money gets allocated. For a business owner, you know, days means dollars. We're looking at sixty-six dollars a day on average is what I am looking at for my cost of not renting these out or having them empty. The other costs are probably the landlords or other business people who have not come forward or talked about it because they feel that there's nothing they can do, have left them empty. If not, there are tenants who still live in some of these places with mold growing, the health effects that are still there. I don't feel that they will take care of some of these issues unless you guys intervene But, yeah, I just wanted to basically comment on those few things, just let you know where we stand on that.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Wattier. And I appreciate some of the testimony you gave. You mentioned you've got thirty-five twenty-five Baldwin Apartments. How many units is that?
There's four units in that building. We also have thirty-five oh nine Baldwin, which was also affected but not nearly as severely as thirty-five twenty-five.
Okay. And the four units, are those lower level that were affected or?
Yes.
Okay, so it's more than a fourplex?
No, it's a, it's a fourplex. The two units in the basement were, units one and two were the ones affected on both thirty-five twenty-five and thirty-five oh nine Baldwin.
Okay, so two of the four units were affected? The lower-level ones?
Four, two of, per building.
Two, okay, thank you. You started it, you rephrased my question that I'd given to Mr. Hacker and I don't, and you then mentioned about perhaps waiting the program to compensate owners of apartment buildings. You didn't really distinguish though between, should we apply that million dollars towards the solution or?
I would really, I think there would be a way to, you know, maybe allocate some here and there. There should be possible ways, I would think, that, you know, if they do feel there is a fix, could there be, whether, you know, whether they do need to put it there? Whether, if we did repair businesses and move forward with over time fixing sewer lines, if they feel that this event will not happen until, say, another twenty years from now? I mean, how confident are they in that? The other, the other thing would just be, you know, making sure that, you know, are we have, you know, safe places for people to live? Make sure, you know, the people who aren't coming forward as far as landlords that maybe really need that more and just pretty much don't feel that they have anywhere to go right now with anything. I mean, it'd be just things to consider.
Have you talked to other homeowners, apartment building owners that haven't appeared?
I've talked to other tenants. My father has a building at thirty-five oh one. He, right now, has just tore out a lot of stuff and has just got it cleaned up, dried out, and then has just laid plain carpet down, but is just waiting, I guess, to hear what is going on here and with the city, what we can, you know, receive as far as funding. He has not yet submitted a claim. He's also not very computer savvy to find those forms online. There were a couple of the buildings I had talked to where the tenants still, I have not talked to the landlords there. I do know that those tenants are working very hard every night to try and fix it themselves because nobody has stepped up yet.
Jane?
Did you experience the October and May? So both?
Yes.
Okay.
But you said your October application was lost or misplaced?
Last time I was here, the last council meeting, my name was not on the list of people who had submitted a claim. We had received a letter from them stating that they were not going to cover anything. So I'm not sure why it wasn't on the claims, but I did receive a letter stating that, of the liability there. So I don't know where it's missing at, but I have not yet resubmitted that.
Jeff, could you connect with him and make sure that we have him straight away, squared away as far as this process goes?
On the October?
Yeah, for October.
We're certainly willing to discuss with any claimant, the status of their claim. The process, if this disaster program is passed, we would expect people to submit because the fact that you've submitted a claim to the city would not automatically enroll you in the disaster relief program. You might not want to be involved in the disaster relief program. So he would have to resubmit.
Yeah.
Okay. But yeah, we can, anytime, I mean, he wants to call and see what the status is, we'd be happy to determine whether we've received it and where it's at.
And then if we pass this here, we would be giving some notification of folks that we know have been affected, that here is, this is a program that's out there. And of course, we have our friends with Lincoln Journal Star and other media outlets that would say so as well.
Right. At this point, we've got two groups, I would say, that we've had contact with. You've got the group of people that have filed-- Right. At this point, we've got two, two groups I would say that we've had contact with. You've got the group of people that have filed claims, either from the October storm or from the May storm. So we have those people identified. We also have had people that have called in to Public Works and Public Works has gone out and inspected and confirmed that it's sewage backup and, and they have a record of those people as well. So we would be contacting them as well.
Great. Thanks.
If I may, Mr. Kirkpatrick, the program, as is proposed, would be limited to a million dollars less administrative costs and you said a first come, first served basis, I think.
Yes.
Could you explain what that is? Because Mr. Water here was saying, for example, his father hadn't contacted, was just kind of sitting back. So there could be a lot of other claims out there. Does that mean the first hundred, if that eats up the fun, it's gone or how does that work?
Well, yes, you do have the limit per claim of five thousand dollars per housing unit, per event. So you can't have, you know, the first twenty people come in and get all the, all of the money. But yeah, once the money is gone, the money is gone. On the other hand, we don't have a waiting list at this point because we don't have a program. So if the, the city passes it, we start gearing up so we can receive the applications next week, that would, when people would want to get in line.
Would, would the fact that like last September, October incident where we had some claims, would they automatically be put on or do those individuals have to?
They would have to apply. Just because you've submitted a claim with the city for damages would not put you on the, the applicant list.
It's a clean slate first in line?
Yes.
But basically, I think Jeff, you were saying that you would notify those people that have put in, that filed a claim in October and those that have filed a claim in May, that this is an emergency assistance program available to you. We encourage you to file.
Yes, we would.
Okay.
Great. Do you have any other questions?
No, I just wanted to, uh, at least state some of those things.
Appreciate you taking the time to come down. Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Anyone else would like to speak to this item? And if you're going to speak to this item, you can come forward. So that way we know how many people are going to testify.
Hi, um, my name is Jewel Holtz and we have a house at thirty-eight oh-five St. Paul.
Would you spell your last name?
H O L Z.
All right. And it was Jewel?
Jewel, J U E L L E. I guess my first question is just before I forget, um, if you're going to notify the people who already made claims, does that go out first before the public gets it, the notice of application? Cause that was a lot of work that we put in just to get the claim rolled up on top of trying to take care of the problem. It just seems like it, somebody off the street could just come in and take money first and we're the ones that actually made the claim and did everything first. Called the city first. You see what, do you understand what I'm trying to say? I'm so nervous. I'm sorry.
And I can address that. I didn't know if the, the council wanted to finish with their questions before they called me back up here.
Oh, and why, why don't we do this? Why don't we have her, ask her questions and we'll have you come up and rebut at, at that time and, um, I don't know, should we probably have everyone bring questions forward and then have you come up after that and, and we'll take, we'll take each question from each person and we'll all write them down here so we, so we don't miss anything. But, um, that way we have everything answered at one time.
Thank you. I just think that would be fair that the people already who made claims should have first choice. At least know about it. Cause I don't have the newspaper. I hardly watch the news. So I might miss it. I also want to thank you all just for doing the whole million dollar thing. I think it should be more, but I mean, I'm grateful. Thank you Cindy Lamb for calling me back and keeping me posted on everything. I don't know who made the decision on the, my, is it mitigation costs? I mean, I ran out to people that are under Lincoln Housing Authority. So I wasn't going to put more carpet in because I didn't want to do this again. But they said because it had carpet in when they moved in, I have to replace all the carpet. And, um, so I didn't know how come carpet wasn't part of the deal. I mean, I don't know when you would stop on how many things are covered, but carpet, drywall, all that stuff has to be in there for the, for the people that live their own housing, for them to live there. And they won't have a place to live if they don't have, if I don't do it right. Cause I called them after I did all the cleaning and stuff to make sure we did a good job because the first time we had Paul Davis come out. So they, of course, did, we didn't know what we were doing. We, I just know what they did and I followed what they did. I just didn't have all the equipment and all the special stuff you need to clean. So anyways, they came out and apparently we did a good job and, um, we put it back together. It's just, you know, except for the carpet. So anyways, they have different rules and so if we got this money back, then I would have that to put the new carpet in, which I only got to July first. So I'm going to have to do that probably before all this gets done. So I didn't know if you could include carpet in there. The other thing was someone mentioned about the plumber and the black flow. I've talked to three plumbers. They all said the same thing. If you put the backflow in, you could just be as, asking for more problems. Then how many times are we going to have a storm? That's, that's kind of what they said, even though we've had two. So I don't know if we want to do that because then we'd have to tear out the whole concrete in the basement to do that. And there's people living there. And then it, like, if they're, that could just have a whole bunch of new problems that I, I just can't do. And in insurance, I, ever, since the October storm, I have now got backup insurance. I didn't know if there was a commercial or personal, because he mentioned commercial. We just, that's a rental house for us for retirement. So I didn't consider that commercial. They gave us backup insurance and I've got to go and check to see if they thought that, they knew that was a rental house and not a personal house. So we did, we did able to get backup insurance. But there's also a limit on it. You got deductibles and everything else. You got to deal with that. So whatever y'all give us, we might be able to get money back for the base storm. Same thing as car insurance. If I use it, it's going to come back and haunt me later. So we're still debating. Cause we're this close of selling it. I can't do this again. When this happened in May, I just stood there and cried. I didn't know what to do anymore because we're out of money. So anyways, that's, that's the only one I want to say. I just want to thank everybody, but you know, we, I, and the, the question about the million dollars for us or for the sewer system, I think it should go to the people that are trying to clean up the neighborhood. Because if we sell, when we bought it, it was a slum place. We fixed it up perfect. Housing thinks we're stupid to even be renting this out because it's really, really nice. And now I feel like I had to put cheaper carpet in or cheaper materials. We just run out of money. Cause I can't afford the carpet that was in there when it happened in October. So, um, if I sell it, somebody buys it as an investment and they probably won't take care of it like we do, I feel. But do you have any questions?
John?
Two questions. First, you said you did get some insurance from your policy or?
We, we can't, I already called them. They said if we filed, they had, they first want to know what the city is going to do first because it's been publicized. So they're thinking we're going to get money from that. So they want to know what happens after that. After that, this storm, it wasn't as expensive as the first one for us because we didn't know what we were doing the first time. So we hired like apparently the most expensive person on earth. That was nine thousand dollars just for Paul Davis. That wasn't for fixing anything or anything. So they said, the insurance company said we should wait. Then they kept stressing, well, if you use it, you know, later on, your insurance could go up. So then five thousand, it would make up some of the difference for this, this time. You know, we'll still take a loss, but you know, nothing else we could do.
And you said you paid nine thousand to Paul Da, to the?
That was just for Paul Davis. I, when I made the claim, it has Paul Davis and then it has everything else that we did. And then the personal property, which I already knew wasn't covered. This storm, I put in, I took the Paul Davis's paper and wrote down what I think my husband made. I didn't even times it by two. I just did it as me and my husband did the peanut and stuff. And this is how much I thought it was worth. And that's how I tried to figure out the time, but I'm sure that's not the correct way to be doing it, but.
And how many units do you have?
We just have the one house on thirty-eight oh-five that was affected by the storm. We have another rental, but it wasn't affected. But we're going to sell that because I've got to pay, I feel now, I, because somebody moved out of the other one. So we're fixing that one. Going to sell that, pay this one off and then see where we are. I just can't be paying more payments. And then this happens again, we won't have any more tenants. Our last tenant just left. They just packed up their stuff and left. And there was nothing I could do about even, what am I going to say? You know, they're, they don't want their kids exposed to sewer. You know, even though they could have lived upstairs, but I couldn't make them stay.
I think the remetera, remediation definition you'll need to understand because I'm not sure that's going to cover carpet and drywall.
Yeah. And that's what I was just, didn't know who made that decision or where it stopped of, of what was covered. I think, you know, I put down in the claim, you know, our time and stuff, and then there was landfill cost and all that other stuff. But, you know, the, the Lincoln, um, housing is making us put the carpet now. Instead of, I was going to do some kind of concrete decoration floor or something, you know, but they said I couldn't do that. So.
Any other questions?
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you for coming. Anyone else would like to speak on this item?
Brandon Seifert, four-two-four-one Knox Street.
Go ahead.
I hadn't intended to speak today, but I thought maybe you'd want to hear from just a homeowner, no commercial, no rental. I was also affected by the October storm and again in May. Um, we were kind of lucky in the May storm because after the October event, I was a little bit more aware of what could happen. Um, so I stayed up all night that Wednesday and kept watching, kept checking. Sure enough, it bubbled up. Um, unfortunately, I wasn't smart enough to have a plug or anything to put in there. So I stuffed a rag in there, tamped it down. That pretty well stemmed the flow for us. Um, we only ended up with a few inches this time around. Nothing really damaged because there was nothing down there after the October event. We took the carpet out. We took, uh, paneling out, clothing, personal items, all of it went out to, to the street. This time around, we took clothing out, personal items out, all out to the street. Uh, I guess one of the good things though is I got to know my neighbors a little bit because everybody was taking their stuff out to the street. You know, it, it was pretty sad. I mean, everybody's, well, not their whole lives, but a lot of their possessions just out at the corner. The whole street just kind of looked like a junkyard. So since I did all the work myself, I didn't incur the costs that other people do. But it is disgusting work. You know, I'll tell you that. You know, if, if I had known when I bought the house, that something like this could have happened, never would have bought it. And so I think when I go to sell it and I put that on the disclosure, I'm going to have a lot of trouble selling my house. You know, I don't intend to sell anytime soon. So I'm hoping that the city can fix this in the years before I do sell the house. I don't know what it's going to do to market value. It's been pretty well publicized, but that's one of my concerns. So if you ask me, you know, a million dollars for fixing it or a million dollars toward, uh, helping some folks, on my end, I don't have a lot of cost. I paid it all out of pocket. Um, I, I put the hours in myself. My fiance at the time helped me out in October, still married me and helped me out in May. So, so, uh, it, it, it's been a trial and, um, you know, I, I would honestly say I'd like to see it fixed. But talking with my neighbors, I think there are some people out there who really could use the help. You know, there's, there's disposal costs and some of them aren't fully aware of, of what the, um, the remediation terms are. You know, they were, they were also talking about appliances and stuff like that. So I think that really needs to be kind of publicized so people understand that it's just, uh, the repair work, um, and the disposal fees. I guess I just want to close with saying every time it rains, last night, a few nights ago, I wake up at midnight, one in the morning and go downstairs and check my basement. And that's not a good way to live. I'd like to sleep through the night when we have a storm. So, thank you.
Questions from Mr. Seifert?
Mr. Seifert, you used the word repair and my understanding is this would just, the remuneration or remediation would be the cleanup, not necessarily repair of items. So I just don't want, I want everyone, I want to make sure we have everyone on the same wavelength so that there are no false, uh, wrong expectations and there's.
Yeah. So you've made my point. We're, we're all a little unsure and a little ignorant of, of what the remediation actually covers. So thank you for that.
And I, you know, thank you very much for your time.
Any other questions? Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak to this item? All right, Jeff, would you come back? We wrote down a number of questions. I'm sure you did as well, but, uh, would you like to start at the top and we'll see if we miss anything?
Well, the first question I heard was as far as notification, um, that, and I, if this passes, I would hope that there'll be some coverage in the newspaper and radio stations. We will be mailing though to everyone who submitted a sewage backup related claim, as well as those people that have already contacted the Public Works Department that we're aware of. So basically everybody that's contacted the city that we're aware of, either the Public Works Department or the Law Department, will notify them that the, this program is in place and encourage them to submit an application for disaster relief. And we'll have an application form for them to fill out.
Roy?
Uh, let's suppose this passes this afternoon. How soon would people be able to make application?
I would hope that we would have, be able, be in a position to accept applications as early as next week.
Cindy?
Um, could you, could the time that we begin accepting applications have, give lag times that those that are notified by mail will have the same notice in the event that they don't have, get newspapers or?
Well, I mean, most people are going to hear either through news or like many of us here through Facebook as our neighbors post that they, this past, and they heard it on the radio or whatever. Um, the, but we will, the, I mean, the letter just goes out to everybody that we're, we know about. The timeframe is going to be the same for everyone as far as when you apply, we, uh, it's first come, first served. I mean, we're hoping that a million dollars is going to be able to help out a lot of people, maybe everyone. That's, that was really the design would be to help out everyone in part because if someone's got a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in damage, we're not going to pay them a hundred and eighty thousand. We're not going to put them back in the position they were. This is for some disaster assistance rather than an insurance program that puts them back in the position that they were before the storm.
Jane?
Oh, I didn't have a question.
Oh, John?
Would you define how you read the, the word application that you just mentioned? Is that as one, I think it's Ms. Holtz was saying, she went to a lot of work to apply to our, uh, claims approach and all. But I mean, is it just a matter of they'll sign their name and say, I hereby apply, or do they have to add the documentation and everything?
Well, they will have to, um,
And I recognize they'd have to furnish it sometime, but it, is it just a matter of they say, hey, city or neighbor works or whomever administers this, I apply?
Yeah, I think that as far as first in time, and again, I'm hoping that we won't have anybody left off when we run out of money. Uh, I would hope that a million dollars would keep that from happening. But as far as considering when they've applied, then it could be, as long as we've got a record of that. It doesn't have to be the full documentation for them to, to be applied as far as the record. The caveat to that is the people that have filed claims in October and filed claims already because of the May storm, we will not consider those to be applications. There could well be someone who doesn't want to apply for this program. They want to, they wanted to file a claim, but they don't want to apply for the program. That's a separate action, a separate step. But if they call and say, I want to apply for the program, here's my name, here's my address, um, we would consider that as being indication they want to apply. And that would be that date going forward that they would be an application date.
Okay. And then, then they follow up with the documentation?
Exactly.
I just wanted to clarify how difficult it would be to get first in line or second line. One of the, uh, testifiers talked about, I believe there was some, there might have been insurance reimbursement or whatever. Regardless, would you address what happens if somebody's homeowner's insurance or renter's insurance reimburses them? What does that do to this? Can they get this on top of the insurance or are we subrogated or exactly what happens?
Well, the, the program talks about this, uh, reimbursement. Well, the program talks about this reimbursement expense. This aid is for people that are not covered under individual or group insurance policies. We think that will be most of the people that were affected. But one of the requirements that we have in the program is that you show us that you don't have insurance. So if you have a letter from your insurance agent saying you're not covered for this event, that would be sufficient in your eligible to apply. If you are covered, for those lucky few that are, then you wouldn't be eligible for this program.
I think we had a couple more costs of, or questions about how we defined remediation and the questions about the people that have already filed claims with the city and whether they would be first in line. But I think from my understanding, what you're talking about, they would be, it would be a first-in-line situation for who applies, correct?
That applies going forward. Just because you have a claim with the city because of that event now does not mean you've applied for this program and you're not going to be, you have to apply for this program specifically. You can't have already applied for a program because it doesn't exist at this point.
And do we define remediation anywhere in here? And I apologize, I should have probably looked for that before I asked the question.
We do have examples, and the examples of remediation expenses would include materials and services used to drain or remove sewage from a home or structure, removal of building materials damaged and likely result in mold, cleaning services and supplies used to remove or disinfect sewage impacts, removal of furnishings and other items within a home which may have been damaged by contact with sewage. And so, for example, if you take your carpet to the dump, those fees that you pay for them to accept your carpeting, that would be a remediation fee. The cost of replacing the carpeting is not a remediation fee, mitigation fee. So that would not be eligible. The Paul Davis, if you hired Paul Davis to disinfect your basement, that would be a cost that would be a mitigation fee that would be covered. If you did it yourself, and you know what you're doing, and we would inspect to make sure, because if you didn't do a good job, we're not going to reimburse you for that. But if you know what you're doing, the question is, can I be reimbursed if I did the work myself rather than hiring a company? And the answer is yes. But if you are a stockbroker and you figure you make $100 an hour, we're not going to reimburse you for your $100 an hour that you spent cleaning out your basement. We're going to assume that you could have hired somebody for cheaper. What we will try to do is reimburse you at a rate that would be competitive.
Okay. Any other questions for Jeff? All right. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right.
I guess, well, maybe I have a question on procedural matters. At this point in time, do we make motions to approve item number 12 and...
That in the voting session.
In the voting session.
All right, Teresa, next item.
All right. Next would be our public hearing ordinance's second reading, item 14, miscellaneous 15001, application of Lincoln North Creek LLC to vacate a portion of North Creek Commercial Park Final Platte, generally located at the end of Wildcat Drive and Whitehead Drive.
I'm Marcia Kinning. I'm here on, with Riga Engineering Group, 601 Old Chaney Road, Lincoln. I'm just here, just in case you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions on this item?
Sorry.
All right. Thanks. Do we get her, we got her address and everything?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I wasn't paying attention.
Marcia and I are on first name basis now.
Awesome. Well, that makes things easier.
It does.
All right. All right. Next item, Teresa.
That concludes our public hearing. We can move into the voting session. Public hearing resolutions. Item 10 is the report of new impending claims against the city for May 16 through 31st, 2015, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Jane. Discussion. Call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Item 11 is the resolution regarding the publication of the revenues and expenditures for the 1/4% sales tax, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Jane. Discussion.
I just wanted to say thank you to Steve Hopka because when he was here for the public hearing on this item and this potential reporting, when it was requested of him that he put these numbers from the sales tax revenue online, he immediately agreed, was willing to do that on the spot. So while I plan to support this resolution, it is really a formality of something he already agreed to do, and just want to thank him and the Finance Department for their cooperation.
Any other discussion? And I'll just say ditto. Call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Next would be item 12, the resolution regarding the response by Public Works to the sanitary sewer backup problems during the two recent extraordinary rain events. This is introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Jane. Discussion. Cindy.
Yes, thank you. There was some talk about the, well, about the, oh, gosh, where am I? I wanted to make a motion to add a paragraph nine, and I have the exact language. And basically, it has to do with the impact of proactive program to encourage homeowners and business owners to inspect whether they have properly installed sump pumps. And so I would like, my motion is that the paragraph nine read, nine, that the department review and evaluate the effectiveness and/or anticipated impact of a proactive program to encourage homeowners and businesses to correct any improperly installed sump pumps.
Cindy, would I be able to get that verbiage from you?
Yes.
Thank you.
Seconded by Roy. Discussion.
I think that's a great idea. I think that's something that Public Works has also been an advocate of, to get out some public service announcements to really explain to homeowners the way to have your sump pump installed and to correctly dispose of that water.
John.
I would wonder, I think it's a great addition, would it be appropriate, because you've got that line that homeowners have from their home to the city sanitary sewer to add in their sump pumps and their connection of...
Lateral. It's called a lateral.
The lateral, or whatever, they, from their home to the tap. You know, they might have tree root or deterioration.
I guess my reasoning was that a lot of homeowners don't necessarily know if their sump pump is correctly installed, and I think that's a little bit different than perhaps the sewer lines. And I believe that this, using kind of a carrot approach and encouraging them to find out about that, and even though it's not in code to have it actually attached to the sewage treatment, that I believe that the department can offer, perhaps find a way to offer, and what impact would be best for the homeowners, to encourage them to go ahead and get that done, looked at. And yeah, I do believe it would be helpful to encourage people to have those lines examined, but I don't know that that would be as simple as calling out your plumber to check out whether your sump pump is properly installed.
Well, I guess if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to make the motion to amend yours to add those lateral lines, collateral lines. Again, it's a, it's sort of this policy we're trying to set up, and so I think it would be good faith to ask people to consider that.
Second. Seconded by Carl.
Cindy needs to accept the...
You accept the...
...motion to amend.
Yes.
The amendment?
Yes.
Okay. That way, we all have to vote once.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we good? We're good?
Okay.
Go hear from Donna. Staff questions for Donna?
So you're, you've got this whole study that you're doing over the next year, and we'll report back all those city-related issues, but this is more of a homeowner kind of issue. So, how difficult is it to do what has been suggested here in terms of checking your...
I think encouraging it and providing education for our homeowners and businesses out there is something we could certainly report on, that effort. How successful we are is another issue with regard to that, so.
Any other questions on, for Donna? All right. Thank you, Donna. Any other discussion on the motion to amend motion? All right. Call the roll on the motion to amend, motion number one.
The motion to amend, number one.
Well, do we have to vote on amendment?
Yes.
Yeah, we have to vote on amendment to the amendment.
Lamb accepted it, so we don't need to vote on that, correct?
Okay. All right. We'll just vote on the motion to amend, number one.
Motion to amend.
Yep.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Then we just have the main motion.
Any further discussion on the main motion?
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Next then is item 13, the resolution to approve the creation of the Temporary Sanitary Sewer Disaster Recovery Assistance Program, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Jane. Discussion. Cindy.
Thank you. I would move that the attachment entitled Temporary Sanitary Sewer Disaster Recovery Assistance Program be amended in the third paragraph, excuse me, fourth paragraph under the third heading Fund Administration in order to insert after the sentence that says that will be administered by Neighbor Works, a nonprofit Lincoln Housing Support Agency, to just add or another nonprofit agency.
Second. Seconded by Roy. Discussion. All right. Call the roll on the motion to amend.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay. Discussion on the main motion, or staff questions. Larry?
I just wanted to thank the people who've come down and testified, and those who weren't able to, but also suffered during these extraordinary storms, and say that these extraordinary experiences have a call for extraordinary measures, and I intend to support the disaster relief program.
Jane.
I too want to thank all those that have been impacted by this, and I can't even begin to understand the horrors that you've had to deal with, and not only once, but twice. And I can tell you that it's unfortunate that you have to be so in tune to rainfall, and it instills these areas of panic that you have to respond as quickly as possible. And I can tell you as an elected official, although I don't know the horrible cleanup that you had to endure, I can assure you that with all this rainfall that we're getting, we're very much attuned to that, and we certainly are sympathetic to everything that you have gone through. And I too am very supportive of this emergency assistant program to find some relief, to help those folks who need the financial assistance to make sure that their property is restored in terms of health and safety so that they can inhabit it.
Carl.
Thank you. This, as my colleagues have mentioned, is, it's hard to imagine anything worse. And what's important to remember here is that this, this action, if it's approved, is a health issue. It's not something that we're doing to admit liability, but it's something to help provide safe housing for individuals in this community so that they don't have to live in the residue of this, of the filth. And that's, that's the purpose of what we're doing. Thank you.
Cindy.
Thank you. Yes. I wanted to say also that I know that it's been hard. I've visited with a lot of residents in northeast Lincoln that have experienced very difficult time during this cleanup, but I remain committed to government's role being the health and safety of its citizens. And this was very extraordinary, these events, and we want to make sure that we, you know, sometimes we just have to step in and take care of the health of our citizens, and so I'm supportive of the measure.
John.
Yeah. This is a real difficult issue, and as I've said before, I grew up with this in the early 1950s, before we had Holmes Lake Dam, in which helped in stormwater, which then impacted the sanitary system. So I can identify with it. Up to this point, I've questioned this program seriously in that I felt that we ought to be looking at the solution for the future, because as the one gentleman testified about, Brandon was testifying about living, I call it the time bomb under your pillow. That's not a pleasant experience. And I'd really like to see this million dollars out of the disaster, and I'd like to see that applied towards solutions. I don't know that we can ever totally solve it, but I think that that's what I heard at the hearing we had in early May was a very predominant theme. And I'm worried that the program, as it's set up, if it goes to 5,000, sounds like there are other people haven't applied yet. What would happen there? It creates something of a, well, first come, first served situation, but it doesn't solve it long-term. And so it's just been very concerning to me that we ought to be focusing our efforts on the future and working on the solutions. I know we had the prior measure that talked about that. And so, you know, it's just, it's very hard. I appreciate the individuals who have worked on developing the parameters of this program, and I'm just real perplexed that we aren't focusing on the solution, really. I just, that's what I've heard predominantly from people, so that they can afford to stay there. It's one thing to get the cleaning damages, but what do they do beyond that? And so I'm not sure where I'm going to vote right this moment. But anyway, just want to make those comments.
Okay. I think we're at one of those times where we need to step in and figure out how to help some people as far as, you know, from a public safety aspect and from a public health aspect, because there has been an event that happened beyond any of our control. And I think we do have a role in being that safety net and coming in and helping people. That doesn't mean that we're not looking at how to correct this in the future. I think the resolution that we just passed addresses that. But, you know, the one thing that kind of keeps me up at night a little bit, and I know Mr. Seifert has this problem, and his basement, every time that it rains, is that I wonder, just whenever it had rained over two inches, thinking to myself, God, I wonder if it's going to be today that we get another one, or I wonder how much rain we're going to get, and that's really no lay for any of us to live. So as we look for those solutions, I think now we step in and we correct the problem with the public safety aspects and make sure that we can help some people out that really need help at this time. But I appreciate the work of the city attorney's office and answering all the questions that we've had so far. This has not been an easy thing to get to this moment, and we've had a lot of off-the-wall questions for you guys, and I appreciate you guys taking the time to answer those questions and work with us to get this done. Call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item 14 is our only public hearing ordinance on second reading. Ordinance's third reading, item 15 is Use Permit 117E, application of Peters Properties LLC to remove the land use table, maximum floor area tables, and land area calculations from the site plan, and approve the waiver to eliminate the specific use regulation as defined in section 27, 51.030, subsection C1, on property generally located west of South 14th Street and Garrett Lane, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Cindy. Discussion. Call the roll.
Gaylor Baird? Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item 16 is text amendment 15006, amending sections 27.51.030 and 27.64.010.
Fellers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item 16 is text amendment 15006, amending sections 27.51.030 and 27.64.010 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to the I-3 Employment Center District to allow the City Council to waive specific use regulations set forth in section 2751030 and repealing sections 2751030 and 2764010 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as hitherto existing, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Jane. Discussion. Call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item 18 is approving an amendment to the bond ordinance for the City of Lincoln, Block 68 Redevelopment Project in Greater Downtown Lincoln to create another bond purchaser type and set priorities for repayment, introduced by Christensen.
So moved. Second. I can't do that anymore. Dang it. Cindy, I was so used to doing that before. Man. Call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Resolutions on first reading were items 19 through 30. Ordinance's first reading were items 31 through 34. It's not an open mic.
I would move for adjournment, Mr. Chair.
Seconded by Larian. Discussion. Call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.